I'd like to follow the Riverside Township Board of Trustees meeting together for November...
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth. To order. Roll call, please.
Wayne, do the pledge.
Oh, yeah.
May I use your name? May I use the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Here.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Here.
Trustee Ertler?
Here.
Let the record note that Mary Robb Clark, uh, trustee Clark is not in attendance as of 7:00 PM this evening. Supervisor Tusher?
Here.
And let the record note that Clerk Law is also in attendance.
Do I have approval for the minutes of October 8th, 2013 board meeting?
So moved.
Do you have your second?
I second.
Any questions, concerns?
I have one comment, one correction on, uh, page four, under item three that's listed there, one, two, three. I think the correct word in the second line is revenues, not expenditures. It says however, as of September 30th. It should be the revenues, not expenditures.
Sorry.
Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none.
I'll make the motion as corrected.
Do you have your motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to prove the minutes as corrected.
All right, you have your second.
My second.
All in favor or roll call.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Any communications?
Yes, we have several communications. Unfortunately, two of them have already passed. There was the 25-year anniversary access to care benefit dinner was on the 16th of November. There was also a 20, 125-year anniversary gala for Lions and that was held on Friday, the 15th of November. And we also received a thank you note from trustee Kavitsky for our expression of sympathy for her brother. That concludes. Please let the minutes note that trustee Clark is now in attendance.
Okay, visitors' remarks. Okay, I have no report. Trustees' report?
None from here.
Just one from here, from this side. Wayne Giesman and I attended the annual educational conference for township officials of Illinois this recently. And Riverside was one of, I think, only 18 townships in the whole state, and there are 1,432 townships in Illinois, to get a recognition for, at a minimum, 70 hours of educational credit during this past fiscal year. So we added our little plaque to our big plaque. So for 2013, we have achieved the, at least a minimum of 70 educational credit hours. So we were happy about that.
You bet. Any other trustees' reports? Mental health board reports? Hearing none. Go to both business. You're looking in front of me here, the annual town levy report. The first one is for the general town fund, no increase, but for mental health board, there's 1.7% increase, plus a $3,000 new building. The second one is 1.7 for the annual town fund and the same 1.7 for the mental health board. What is the board's pleasure?
At this meeting, we are to estimate the amount and then adopt the levy in December.
We don't, we can adopt it now if we wanted to, but as long as it's adopted before the deadline.
Well.
But what were you gonna say?
I think if we estimate it now, it gives us an opportunity to change it if we want to.
That's fine.
So, I mean, that would be my feeling. I don't know what anyone else thinks.
Yeah, I think that's pretty logical.
I have no problem with that.
So if, my suggestion would be to estimate the town levy for the general town fund and the general assistance fund at the extension, at the extension that was granted, that will be granted to us from Cook County. For the town fund...
What does that increase to?
Well, that is in the draft that has the 0%. So that was, the extension was incorporated into that draft. And for the town fund, the amount is $508,202 for general assistance, it is $54,064.
Wait a minute, how much was it for the general town fund?
General town, uh...
508,202?
Yeah, 508,202, which was on the levy edit report. And then 54,064 for GA. And then my suggestion would be to...
What was it for the general assistance here?
$54,064.
That's on page six.
Well, it's on page five.
$54,064.
Oh, five here, okay. I'm looking at the...
Yeah, 54,064 and then...
The facts.
The extension plus 1.7% and $3,000 for new property to the mental health board, the mental health fund, rather.
And what is the amount?
Well, for mental health, that would be, uh...
541,834?
Yeah, yes.
And what are you saying we should be doing?
538, well, I didn't hear what you said, John. 538, 834.
No, Rick said 541, 834. That includes the new property collection.
Correct, yes, correct.
And I just agreed with that.
Okay, okay, I didn't quite hear the figure. I would favor that as the estimate for today.
1,104,100? 1,104,100?
No, the total on, well, what we received from DeMonte's office shows $1,095,093.
That's about $9,000 left.
But you know, you're right on here. Now, how is that?
No, I've got 1,104,100.
That's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
Total levy.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at a 20,012. You're correct, yeah. Total 1,104,100.
And you agree with the first one in this first draft?
That would be my suggestion.
Anybody else have any other suggestions?
Well, I agree with that.
Mary Robb?
I agree.
Wayne?
I agree.
And you said you agree, I agree. Why don't we just pass it tonight since the numbers are different? Unless you, you know something that you might want to change?
No, I just think that it's probably to do it as a two-step process. Because next month, even if we stay with these figures, it gives us, we have the actual documents, not just drafts. And it allows us an opportunity to make a change if we want to.
Make your change now, yeah?
I don't have a change right now. I'm just saying.
Why are you saying you're gonna make a change next month?
Because the way the law is written, it's, you estimate the amount in November, 20 days before you approve it in December, and then you file it in the last Tuesday of December. I'm just trying to go by the actual procedures for preparation and filing of the levy.
But if we're gonna change it in December, like you just said, the possibility of, I mean, you know, that doesn't leave us much time.
No, you'd change, if you were going to change it, you'd change it that day. We're est, if you're estimating it today, you could still make a change.
Okay.
You know...
Next month, we'll have it on the levy on the...
We'll adopt it next month.
Yeah, you should adopt it in December. I mean, that's the steps in the process. Those are the steps. You know, estimate it and then adopt it and then file it.
Okay.
So I don't know if, I mean, the motion...
It'll, well...
There was no motion.
There is no real motion, then?
No.
No.
Okay, so the minutes will reflect...
The only motion basically is put it out.
No, 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 you want an amount in the minutes for this meeting. Even if all you say is that we're gonna estimate the levy at 1 million...
104.
Right, 104,100.
Right.
The...
And then that'll be on the agenda in December, it'll adopt it, barring any change.
Yeah, the annual town tax levy 2013 estimated amount is 1,104,100.
Okay. Okay.
Any, anything else?
Do you want the minutes to reflect the breakdown of the general assistance, the general town fund and the mental health fund, Dan? That we indicated?
That probably would be a good idea, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Eligible officials, community project ideas?
I came up with two. One is to have a scholarship and maybe have a $1,000 scholarship broken into three different scholarships. So one would be $500 and the other two would be 250. And we could give them out to residents of Riverside Township. And maybe one, $250 scholarship would be for somebody going into the trades. And maybe one, the other one could be for somebody going into service. And then the $500 scholarship for someone going into political science. And we could establish these scholarships and then notify the schools. And maybe they would have to write a paragraph or a page on why they deserve to win it. And then we could review that and announce a winner in June at our June meeting.
Anybody got any questions?
Well, you haven't been on the board very long, but years ago, we talked about something like this. And I remember talking to the attorney, our attorney, about it. And it's not that simple to do. I think you're more likely able to do something like that, give out scholarships, if you have a youth program in your township. I can't remember now, it's been so long ago that we talked about it, but there, it's not something that's easy to do. We could look into it again and, you know, and refresh our memories as to what the issue is.
You wanna look into that end of the, the legal end of that end? You wanna give Richard a call and look into the, our whole team?
Would instead of calling...
Because Richard doesn't know very well.
Yeah. Instead of calling it a scholarship, could we call it a grant? And would that make it less complicated?
I don't know, but it means really, you're doing the same thing, though. You're, you're...
I would think it'd be even more complicated if we called it a grant because a grant would go to more of an organization in my mind. See what I'm saying? Or a group or...
Well, and we do scholarships at the state level. And the kids that get those, the money goes, goes directly to the school. They don't get it. It goes directly to the school. But, you know, the state organization is the 501(c), and they're just subject to different rules than township members of the state organization are. So, I mean, if people think that's a good idea to pursue it, we can, I can try to find out.
How does North Riverside do that? You know, they're... Is it coming from North Riverside or is it coming, well, it's gotta be coming from North, yeah.
It's through the village. I don't know if the rules are different.
They do that at their annual town levying.
Right.
They give out scholarships?
Yeah. It's always in their brochure.
Yeah.
I could call them and find out how they do it.
But remember, they're a village and, you know, municipality and we're a township, so...
All right, that's true.
Well, we're not gonna be doing this right, right, right away anyway, so we got time to investigate it.
Yeah, no, see what, see what they say.
And I really liked your second idea that you told me about.
Okay, the second one was, there was this book called Out of Chaos. It was about the children that were hidden during the Holocaust. And I know one of the authors of this book. And she said she would be happy to come and speak to the people of Riverside Township. And so I thought maybe on a Sunday afternoon in the wintertime, we could set up a program and she could come. And she knows some, the, some of the other children from this book all live on the North Shore. She said she would bring them and do, kind of do a panel discussion.
Yeah, you had told me that they've done this before.
Right, mhm. They did it in October at the Holocaust Museum in Skokie. And they had 250 seats, but they gave out 300 tickets.
Wow.
And so we could have coffee and cookies and have them down here, you know, for an hour, you know, maybe start at 2:00 on a Sunday afternoon, be over by 3:30. And they can also bring the books and sign them if you want.
What's the, what's the title of her talk?
The Hidden Children Remember the Holocaust?
The Hidden Children?
Yeah, you know, during the Holocaust, a lot of Jewish families hid their childrens in convents and out in, on farmland and things.
Right.
I think that would be wonderful.
I think it'd be very attractive.
Be interesting. Is numbers an issue? Because sometimes we've done some programs in the past and then you don't get the turnout. You know, that's always a, you know, so...
Yeah, that happens to me several times. If that stuff, nobody showed up.
I mean, it would be an interesting discussion, so it may not be a problem.
No, we may want to spend 100, 200 dollars on advertising it, though, because it sounds like an ad.
I think we would advertise.
I mean, not just a blurb, but we would advertise.
Yeah, an advertisement in the local papers. We could put signs up, hopefully the North Riverside Library would let us put it up in the Riverside Library. And then we could also put up signs around town.
Sure.
Because I think, I think this is an excellent idea and I like this very much. But it should also be noted, it just wasn't the Jewish children that were hidden.
I can't hear you, John.
It just wasn't the Jewish children that were hidden from the Germans. I mean, a lot of Austrian children were hidden from the Russians, including my cousins, who were hidden in chicken coops. The Russians wouldn't come in and rape them. So, I mean, that spread all across Europe and I know it's in their hands, but I think, I, I agree with this 100%. I like this idea a lot. I really do. I mean, just the point that it just wasn't Jewish children.
Do your cousins live in the area?
I'm sorry?
Do your cousins live in the area?
Uh, no, my, 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 my one cousin, she lives off south, and my other cousin has gone back to Austria and she's living out in Austria now. And their parents are dead. I mean, my mother and all her family are gone already.
So I was thinking if we had a date on Sunday, February 9th for this, I could check with the author and see if she was available. And one reason I picked that date was because it was after football season and interfere with football.
No, I would be very interested in this. I'd like to maybe talk to some of those people, too, and exchange stories. My mother's mother was shot to death by the Russians.
Ooh, sorry to hear that.
They came into the house, they shot her to death right in her kitchen.
Ooh, sorry to hear that. That was just an awful time.
Oh, it was 1945, at the end of the war.
Okay.
So should I check to see if they're available on that date?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
And then if, do I have permission from the board just to run a quarter page ad?
To what?
Quarter page ad in the landmark, advertising it.
Yeah, I mean, you're not gonna do it now.
No, but I mean, you know, just...
January.
When this happens then.
Yeah.
Once we, once we get everything decided.
Right.
Get a firm date down.
We have to vote on that, don't we?
What?
We have to vote on doing that quarter page ad, don't we? Or you just...
We'd like to get a price on it, probably.
Okay, all right, yeah, okay.
We're not there yet.
That's fine.
I don't know if she's available.
And actually, you can call the landmark, too, and hopefully they would cover this, maybe even a little before and a little after. Or, you know, cover it before, then hopefully they would send somebody to cover it.
Yeah.
So do we need a motion to go ahead with this, or do we...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Passes. Last month, John, you were asking for...
I have, I have a couple of suggestions.
What?
For programs.
I'm sorry.
Something that I find beneficial that the Riverside Bank does once during the year is the shredding program. And I know that there is at least one township out there that a couple of times a year offers free shredding to its, to the community. And, you know, they, what their cost has been, this one township I looked at was $300. And it wouldn't necessarily be $300, but it's not hugely expensive to maybe twice a year, maybe once in the spring and once in the fall, hire a company to come out. Our biggest thing would be where do we put the truck? Since we don't really have, we'd have to make arrangements with, you know, we'd have to make arrangements with the village and the library.
Yes, where a lot of the trucks park, by the garbage cans.
And then let people, I mean, we could set a limit, maybe two boxes, that anybody could come and bring and shred, you know, personal documents.
We don't want people, Sears Tower men trying to break down shredding stuff.
No, they would be for the, for the community.
We have to put a limit on it, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't think it would be expensive. And I've always considered that a nice little benefit. And I certainly have more shredding more than once a year, so...
Yeah.
You know, and to kind of expand on that, we could do a whole recycling program and maybe use the swim club parking lot if it was before they opened. And we could get a shredding thing, an electrical recycling and a paint recycler.
What about pills?
Pills. And then also, at work, I work with this organization called Working Bikes. And they'll take any old bikes. And we did a bike drive at work last spring and we got 44 bikes. And they come out with a truck and, you know, take them back to their...
What do they do with them? Disassemble?
They send them to foreign countries. And the people in the foreign country use the bike for transportation to get to and from home.
Oh, so these are all usable still?
Right, uh-huh.
Okay.
So, I mean, we could expand on your thing and, you know, some Saturday or Sunday in April when people are doing spring cleanup.
Yeah, that, although the Village of Riverside does recycling, so you can take...
So it's a library.
In the, yeah, certain things you can do at the library. I know the village does electronics and...
Right, they have the electronic thing over there.
And I don't know if North Riverside does any recycling or Brookfield, but I know what they do here. But there would be no harm in, especially if we did it once during the year.
Right, you know, as...
And do something different other than, you know, in addition to electronics.
Right, you know, we do electronic pills, the shredding, bicycles.
And if we did more, we might want to consider asking North Riverside if we could set it up in that parking lot in the Commons. Because they have more space than we have over here.
And as I said, too, if it's before the season, the Swim Club is very good about letting people use their parking lot.
Yeah.
Too. And it's really, you know, easy, you know, people drive in and just drop their stuff off.
That's pretty nice. There's some stuff in there that's...
I know.
I mean, we could look at what's, you know, what would be involved and what companies we'd have to work with.
Well, we can investigate that.
Yeah.
The officer. Okay.
And I have one more. I don't know if this one's, well, I have two more, but I'll just tell you one. And I don't know how doable something like this would be, but a senior lawn mowing service program. We have more and more seniors in Riverside. And I've been doing a lot of leaf raking lately and stuff. And so, I mean, not looking at it for myself, but when I'm out there, I think about people that are older than I am and how difficult it must be for them.
I mean, I like that idea except for the fact that would we have to find a company that goes prevailing wage?
I was just gonna say that.
You know, I know we don't have to do it for our grass cutting because, you know, that's exempt. But, I mean, you know, who would pay these people? Obviously...
Well, we would, yeah, we would.
You know, and that could be anybody in the township. I mean, you know, that could cost an arm and a leg.
Yeah, and as we found out, it's, most of these people that do lawns don't really understand prevailing wage anymore.
I can't hear you, Ann.
I said, as you found out in doing some recent checking, the people that mow lawns out there for a living don't understand prevailing wage anymore.
Correct.
So maybe that's not such a good idea. I mean, it's a good idea, but maybe it'd be difficult to implement.
The cost would be rather, that's, that's what I'm thinking. The cost would be really high.
Yeah.
Because, you know, you're talking, how many, 15,000 homes, well? A third of them, 3,000 a house.
Well, something we could think about.
Even at 10, 15 dollars a cut.
That's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
What if we partnered with an organization like the, maybe the Boy Scouts or some older civic organization in the community to have them help the elderly with this and gave them a flat rate per house?
I think RB does stuff like that, but then also, if you give them a flat rate, would we be responsible in case of a child got hurt? I don't know. I'm just asking, throwing it out.
Well, then we'd have to check for legal ramifications, correct?
If we'd be liable, or Young Life, you know?
I can't hear you, Karen.
Young Life, too, might be.
Speak up, I can't hear you people either, so...
Young Life might be a possible thing to partner with. Also, the Riverside Presbyterian Church has a youth group that goes out and does stuff like this, raising money for their mission trip.
I mean, yeah, but then we're gonna be responsible in case if something happens. You know, if somebody cuts a branch down that, you know...
Well, I think that's something we have to take into consideration when we're thinking about what projects, you know, community projects to do, what the liability is to the township. And if we're responsible for any of that, have any liability, it probably isn't gonna be a good idea, so, okay?
Okay. Anybody else? Okay.
I do have one.
What's that?
The possibility of purchasing, purchasing a rain barrel and us reimbursing the purchaser X amount of dollars if they purchase a rain barrel for their home.
For what?
For green, the green earth.
I think the township is in the business of the whole green projects and for buying people rain barrels.
Well, I wouldn't say, I didn't say, I didn't say buy that, but if they purchased one, we could give them a rebate of X amount of dollars.
Paying for part of it, at least.
Yes, paying for part of it. It was just an idea I had. Yes, paying for part of it. It was just an idea I had.
Alright. Anything else? Okay. Under C, the requirements from other townships for the food pantry, you would ask me to look up, John?
Oh, yes.
A lot of them, there are none, as long as you're a resident. There are some that just don't have food pantries, and they send them to, um, a food depository, someplace in Cicero, Chicago.
I just think that people abuse us, that was my point.
You're always gonna get that 2 to 5% that do abuse it, John.
Well, I don't.
You're in the service, right?
No, I was not.
Well, in the service, there's always 5 to 10% that abuse everything in the, in the Marine Corps. Um, no matter what.
That may be true, but I, I still think some of the needy are being denied, having put, to have to put some food on their table, getting a turkey or ham because of these people that come in and they tell their neighbors, you know, let's go, the township's giving away free turkeys and everything, and then maybe somebody, some poor person that can't get here is gonna come in, "Sorry, they're all gone." Because these people who have jobs and everything, you know, Commander, they took the turkeys and hams, and they told their neighbors. That was my point, that was my point.
We only notify people that are already on the, that come to the food pantry, John, and general assistance.
No, no, I beg to differ, because I had heard even last year, this woman had called up, and she told all her neighbors about it, and they were all coming in there looking for turkeys and hams, told her neighbors. And one guy called up and said, "Is my ham ready?" You know, what is this? I mean, some of these people, they're working, they're, they're not poor, they're people who really deserve this food, and are not getting it, I think. That's why I think we should have tighter requirements as to who gets it.
You wanna put together, uh, the requirements that you have?
All I'm saying is maybe something along the lines of general assistance. Now, you know better about general assistance, I don't know, is there abuses in that? Are there abuses in general assistance?
But I try, I try to track them down and then get them off.
And then we should do the same thing with the, with the turkeys and hams on the holidays.
I, I, most of them, you know, they're gonna have to bring in receipt of their income.
Right, okay. I, I don't have a problem with giving out the turkeys and the hams to people that need it, that really need it. I just don't like giving it to the people that abuse the system. That was my point.
But then again, there are some people that, example, water bills come right around Thanksgiving, Christmas, three, $400 water bill. I mean, it takes a bite out of a family with three, four kids, you know. It doesn't happen that often that they will come to the food pantry for help, but it helps stretch that, that budget out.
But you know about this, and they have the reason, and that's my point. They're facing tough times, and they can show you they're facing tough times. I don't have a problem with that at all. It's these people, they just come in, "Where's my ham?" That's the one, that's the one that gets me. When they think they can just come in here and get it, and they're perfectly capable of buying one, and some poor Joe out there isn't gonna be able to get one because they beat him to the punch. That was my point. And I think that's why the requirement should be something along the lines of general assistance, where you check into it and you try to, not, no system is perfect, you know.
I mean, general assistance requirements are extensive. I mean, they've gotta fill out what they have in the bank, which banks they go, what jobs they had in the past and the present.
Some, something like that, and if they can show it, give it to them. I think everybody should have turkey at Thanksgiving and ham at Christmas or vice versa.
A lot of these commi, townships, you know, they'll see 200% above poverty level, and I gave you what the poverty level was for a single person, $11,490 times, you know, plus 200%, that's, what, $22,000?
Well, that was another thing, at, at the last meeting, I believe Wayne brought it up too, oh, this is just, this isn't much money at all. You just buy all this stuff that's, and, well, where does it stop? This isn't much money at all, so we just throw it out there? That sounds like Washington, that's not much money, we'll just raise taxes, just blowing out the money here, and I don't wanna see that happen here.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that was my point. Yeah, the money is there, but let's make sure that the people who really need it get it.
We try, John, we try our best.
Well, I, okay, then maybe we should have some requirements along the lines of general assistance, that's all I'm saying. And make sure that the people that really need it get it.
We'll start that next year then.
Okay.
So you're suggesting then that the only people eligible for the food pantry would be people who are on general assistance?
I said, along the same requirements of general assistance.
So where do you draw the line?
Well, where do we draw the line with general assistance? They have to come up, they have to prove all this stuff, right?
Well, all general assistance people are gonna get it.
That's okay.
And then.
But you're, you're, you're monitoring that.
Right, but then the food pantry is open to anybody who lives in the township, John.
I know, I know that, they can come in and take the grocery bags and do whatever they want.
Right.
And I've seen women come in here with a thing, "Is my bag ready?" I mean, it's like, they just, you know.
They have to call before they come in, that's why they say, "Is my bag ready?"
And then some of them try to pick out a one bag and put it in the other.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know all the tricks of the trade there.
Why, have you done it?
No.
Thank you for laughing, I just.
That wasn't funny, though. No, I have never done that. Okay, can we move on?
Okay. Under new business, Mr. Butterer wants to speak and, um, grant request presentation.
Thank you so much for putting me on the identity giving this opportunity to be with you. A lot of people in town really don't know what the township does, and I know a little more than, than some maybe, and I wanna start off by saying thank you for one, and I think you guys do be able to have a, an admin meeting in this Magnificent Building. We've been your predecessors since I've been in town, which is a couple of decades now. Every few years, there's a, there's a new project, there's a new improvement. This room was remodeled, plastered ceilings and so on, last spring, I think it was. You guys did a magnificent job washing the terracotta, the stone, the brick. Uh, the building's in impeccable shape, and it is the heart of the community. And I refer to it as the campus, primarily this building and the library. Your grounds are gorgeous. So the resort, the Swinging Bridge is gorgeous. And with 15,000 people in the community, you know, once in a while, some of us should say thank you, so I'm here to say thank you. And to tell you a little bit about what the volunteers are doing to help this campus and to help the community. Uh, you've probably heard some things, but this is very brief, it's three minutes, and I'll be answering your questions. And I apologize for showing you on the rear wall, and I'll apologize in advance for the sound that's behind this, but there are, there is no, uh, there are no words, it's just a little music to keep going. So you're able to worry about this connection with this part of the township, with the Riverside Lawn Area, the South River Bridge. The CMAP team that came in advised the village on economic development, advised and suggested that we make a renewed interest in our riverfront, and that as part of that, we're trying to connect the bridge to Swan Con. The strip of, strip of land behind these, these buildings is between nine and 18 feet wide. The rear edge, the edge alone knows about six feet wide, and the widest path into Swan Con is six feet wide, and the Georgia Swan Con is 14 feet wide. So we've been able to make a connection that will be landscaped, will allow viewing, scenic views of the river. And yet, because of this, the canyon wall, there's a floor to as much as about a six-foot gap, and we're concerned with safety. So we've suggested from the beginning that we need to have some type of safety rail, and we're here before you, asking you to partner with us, and have always with important things in the community like the bridge being the center of town. So the village has, has done some landscaping, and they did the chipping, they did the hauling of the, of the river edge. So we, I met with, this is my guys from the county, and we picked together a grant request, it's, it's here before you, and I'm here to answer the question.
Okay, as I told you, we don't own any land, we just own the building. Yeah, or us. You know, we've got nothing to say about it, you know, whether or not the project goes through or doesn't go through. Okay, from what I make out, you don't have the village Riverside's approval for this yet. Uh, and you've been turned down by two commissions.
Well, the village approved with the meaning of the area, I always kept one. And last week, the preservation commission will go to the Senate for its word. Uh, I suspect that with the word based on that, maybe another round of landscape advisory, that permit will be approved. And I'm not trying to, to, to rush, I was trying to fit it into your calendar. And any support that you can give us is appreciated. If it would be, I would be happy if it came with conditions, because you guys have to do what's right in your positions. If it came with conditions subject to permit, subject to, um, prevailing wage contractors, if the township received purchasing of materials, I'll get more volunteers to come back, and we'll put it together under the supervision of the local authority. We're, we're looking at the project in a safe manner, so we can handle it.
Who's us, Jerry?
Uh, we're including all the volunteers at the beginning of the project. They include, um, Russell and Paul Lee, who were a member, Mike Fouch, and then the architect, Jim Allen, the economic development chairman and owner of the Lovebird Land State, and I love the. I thought I got you.
Okay, that's ours, just so that the us is the 12 volunteers that are behind this project.
Well, we were, we were kind of the four who tried and they helped them. I, I think if you, if you, if you hold the community, those that are aware, are enjoying the views, um, we do very rewarding, coming all over here, really, and we wait till I use a very rewarding, like, come on Sunday morning, I haul all the stuff up to the curb for public works to pick up Monday, and I met a hundred residents who would live on the Fairbank Road, and just like, "I can't think of a, ah." And thanks for the kind words, um, from our jury. We had a spark of a nice conversation, it's like, "Love the river, we want a home on the burning," so we can see the river. And this is perfect, not everywhere. Landscape is a precious commodity, but we, we open up the views that this work we had in Long.
And then awesome presentation, you had the word FLOS, F-L-O-S, who is that?
That's the Frederick Holmes Society, they have a terrific job. Most recently, on Riverside Road, from about, um, to Homestead or so, you word this little link, where they put their homes apart. So you can dive down, you can dive down to the side road, and you can now see the Swinging Bridge, you can see the, you can see the pizza town hall.
Now, which commission did you say approved going forward with the fencing?
The Recreation Commission.
And, and which other ones? Do you need the plan commission?
Well, it's, it's an interesting thing, because theoretically, it's object for the village, you don't need any. But.
Riverside.
You don't need any more.
You don't, you don't need commissions to approve permits for the village, our village can approve their own. But they want the involvement from the community, they want us to communicate with the community, just like you guys.
So it would be the plan commission then would be the other one that you'd be looking for?
Yeah, plan, uh, one commissioner didn't like chain link. I understand that I don't like chain link, but it's not kind of very good safety measure, and when you're not in half of it, it's darn near invisible if it's all hacked or developed and optimized. I look at it as a placeholder. The CMAP, the NDA agency, was strongly recommending acting down the old youth center and using that for higher and better use. One of their recommendations was, um, recommendation, another recommendation that I've been around the community for a long, long time is up under that structure, with public access, public views, public views of that great river. I don't know what it should be, I have my own idea, but I don't pretend that they're important. Our promise of the village board was, "We will, we will clear this so you can get back there, so you guys can get back there." So village officials and the earth can get back in the book, and we will cut some, some windows in the trees. The little foresters look at it, said, "These are all weeds, we cut them off." Cut them off. And they said, "Look, this area that Swan Con used to heal, save these two wells." But there were, there were about 15 trees that blew out with the stone seating area. There's probably 50 limestone rocks laying in the water that can be reclaimed and can be restored. That's what we're trying to do, we're just trying to make that connection, trying to open up some more people for safety.
When you refer to the upper bank, what part are you referring to?
There's, there's two protected areas from a motion, the lower bank is armored. And the, the area I'm referring to, by the way, from, from the bigger picture, is basically the library to Swinging Bridge. So there's a lower bank, as it comes around Swan Con, past the library, it's concrete edge, and then it switches to like any locking behavior type, down past Swinging Bridge. About 15 feet or so above that, in height, but only, uh, maybe about 15 feet in altitude, there's a 12-inch concrete canyon wall that holds the land that we sit on, the youth center and the library. That concrete wall is 350 feet long. That concrete wall is three hundred and fifty feet long, it goes from the western edge of the library, you can come out something like, pardon me, not coming out something like library, behind the youth center, all the way to the swingy bridge. And that's the area, that's ten, that way forward, fifty meters maybe, I don't know when that became law, I was going in.
So the path is below that?
Above.
It's above it, okay. And then, so the fencing would be at the retaining wall?
Correct, it would be just, our fault was to put it just inside the retaining wall. The twelve inches of concrete will help support the fence. The fence would be forty-eight inches tall, which is basically to my elbows, so people could move over it and view through.
And it would extend just that distance that, from the bridge to behind the library?
Correct.
But isn't there a path that goes around the river, if you go, my directions inside a building are not good, but that goes actually around the river, around Swan Pond?
There is a path, when you take that road down, you know, that little road that goes down off the street out here?
Yeah.
So you would be going west on that path, but then as it comes around, on the library side, it's, it gets narrower.
So that's the concern there, because there's no fencing of any kind otherwise where the path is around the river.
The, the general rule is that if there's more than thirty-three inch drop, it should be perhaps by a safety rail.
Oh, okay, and the other areas, there's no such drop?
There, I haven't measured all the length of the Swan Pond, but at least there, the path is further away, so you have to, you have to work a little harder to fall off the edge. We haven't had any accident, but people have their, their tune we're working at.
Right.
So someone could fall on any kind of landslide years. But if there were enough weeds and stuff that it wasn't a real annoying place to go, now, you have a view down the river, or five hundred yards in either direction. You can stand by the half of the building, you can see the beautiful library before you put it. You can stand by the library, you can see Swan Pond before you put it. And it's, and it's not like it's been cleared out. You know, there's, there's a lot of forest. Library, in fact, was, was built there for the views of the river, and it became a beautiful day, the library, you look out at a wall of green, which is pretty. And it's designed, it was to be looking across, well, you got the wall of green and forests are now that's your story.
All right, so what's, what's the bottom line here? What are you looking for?
I'm looking for you guys, in grand application, for funding to help us buy tents. We had quotes from a couple suppliers, one of fifty-five hundred dollars, that was the amount that I put in the grant. What brought to my attention, it had to be providing wage, I checked with them, that contractor does not pay providing wage, so we definitely have to be, which is all kind of. There was another quote, it was providing wage, it was higher, it was three thousand seven hundred. Originally, we proposed blue eyed material, in fact, a year ago, we did it, we did a run as a fundraiser for the high school, and we planned to do it again, and I thought we have the opportunity to hook to us, someone will be there, and make more money, so there's substantial contribution, and high net payments at the same time. And it would be, you know, part of it could buy for about two thousand dollars. And, you know, several of us could do it again at the beginning.
One of my concerns, Jerry, is that we don't own the property. We, we have turned down several villages for the rec departments, because in the past, on what they were asking for, we felt that's your responsibility, not ours. I can understand that if we own the building and the property, but we don't.
I hear, I hear exactly what you're saying, and I had, you know, the Holland Services got this coming.
I mean, even just to buy the fence.
I know. I mean, we, we can all take that approach, but it's not ours. And that way, it came over long for fifteen years, the village took that approach. I'm not saying it was intentional, I was on the board fifteen years ago, we didn't talk about cutting it, it was, I felt very forgotten. So if we can all do that, or we can all pull together as partners in some aspect of it, do what we can to do this. So.
And I, I still don't see, I think you're still jumping the gun, because you don't have all, all the right proper, uh, decisions made and approvals.
Well, I think you can see that the village intention...
I don't want to hear intention, I want fact.
The fact is, the trees are then removed, after the building board voted six to zero to approve it.
To approve the removal of the trees.
Yes, the fact is, the main commission voted for the, to approve the fence. Now, you're right, I don't have a ready, I got it to keep rocks, because it will take, and that's what I'm saying, I would love whatever you can do, and if it's voted with the commission, that's okay. You know, you're not, I'm not, I'm not here for a check, I'm here for your cooperation and support.
Well, no, you know, we'd like to cooperate, but we have, I don't think we have enough information to cooperate with, Jerry, I mean, you're, you're saying that you're going, you know, this is what could be, should be, whatever, but the fact is, they're not approved anything yet. They have, you know, as of, on November first, it was, you have three turn downs. Okay? The village manager, Peter, both the board and landscape advisory commission denied it, and the fence, no approval was given. Plan commission said, also said no. That's eleven one.
The main commission and LAC did not vote in support. It's two.
No, the village board hasn't voted either.
No, and they were waiting for the preservation commission, they were the last week, seven to zero, in favor. So I suspect, I don't know if it's on their agenda this week or the next meeting, but that's, that's why I say, it's almost a catch twenty-two when it started, well, we, if we need safety rail, well, what should it be? My recommendation from the day on was a black chain link fence, because it's very safe and it's transparent to the eye. And hopefully, it's a placeholder until it, which I have refused. Well, we have to take here, and have to take there, and have to take here, so we have, but you, still need any of their states, and now we have three friends with some states.
All right, we can't do anything unless the village approves this, that they can go ahead with this, correct?
Yeah, me personally, I don't want to be in the middle between you and the village, by you saying, well, the township said they give us, approved, didn't give us so much money. No. Okay. I believe you should be coming to us after you have all the proper approvals that had you, to put the fence in.
Well, that's, that's a good idea, I didn't think so, but that means I'm talking about in terms of additional support. We believe in the concept, thanks for cutting the trees, but we're not writing a check yet. One, it's got to be providing wage. Two, I got to have a permit signed off by the village manager. Three, the president. Three, you got to come back and answer any more questions that we have. After all that's said done, we will vote, then we'll cut your check, we'll go, have a check, which is the benefit.
After you get all that approval, then come to us, is what I'm saying. Because I don't want to blindly say yes, you can do this without knowing what the village board here is requiring of you.
I think we can't do anything until the village makes, makes a decision one way or the other.
It's a good idea, and look very much...
Listen, we've been going around and around, when you go before the village board, and somebody has a presentation, how much time does the village give them?
I don't know, that's a village...
I think it's about three minutes or something. And we've been going through this, and going through this, there's nothing we can do until the village gives approval here. All right, we're beating a dead horse right now.
That's the way I feel.
Okay. And I, I don't want to throw this out the window.
No, you don't want that.
Okay, all right, but I want to, to hear the village say, okay, you can do this, but we've been through this now for, going on, what, twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes? And we actually got a lot on the agenda here.
What is going up there? And who's going to put it up there? And the cost of it?
The road to the ramp was forty-eight inch high, three hundred and fifty foot long, a black chain link fence. Now, I can be to do whatever you, what I like to do, I can go back to the village, and I can bring those approvals back to you.
I think that's what you should, well, personally, that's what I think you should be doing.
If that works for you, I'm happy to do that. So does that mean you'll give me a grace period to do that, or I miss that mine for you?
We would come up with our own business.
And there's no guarantee, so, you know, don't...
No, but we're not being thrown out the window either.
Right, we're not throwing it out the window, but no guarantee.
Chance to look at it during the...
No, I, I'm perfectly happy with that, I'm not throwing it out the window, but...
Oh, no, you're...
At least your time, at least...
Well, at least not until that fence gets up, so that you can hit against it.
Do we need an option to title this, or do we...
No, 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 no. He's, he's going to come back when, when the village has approved, and then we'll take it from there.
Thank you, Jerry, your presentation was great.
Yes, very good.
Yes, it's a nice project, and I've enjoyed the open views of the river, because I live east of here on Riverside Road, and it's really...
Budgetary transfer for the assessor's office. Do I hear approval for the budgetary transfer?
I make a motion, we approve the budgetary transfer of appropriations.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing on roll call.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tesher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, and the township newsletter for the winter of two thousand thirteen, any changes, any concerns, any additions, deletions?
I have some things, but I'll just work with Andrew.
Leave it with Andrew, okay.
And then if we get this, when does the township letter go out?
As soon as it's approved, then we can order.
Okay.
I mean, you know, as soon, if you got changes, we give them to Andrew, Andrew makes the changes, then we, um, send it over to the printer.
If I may make a suggestion about the township newsletter, I had, we had taken a picture at the chili cookoff, and we had all of us at the booth, and I, Andrew said that it won't print on this particular format, so I'm thinking that maybe next year, we could add to the, to our agenda, to come up with a different format, so we could include pictures of events that we are sponsoring or that we're at, and show our faces in the newsletter, so it would probably cost more money, and I think that we should try to consider that for next year.
Okay, we'll, we'll look into that, we, you can get together and talk about, and try to get some prices on the...
I think that's a good idea, but it's probably going to have to be the same size and folds, you know, for postage reasons, but it's a good idea.
I guess there's something with the way the printing is, because we have green ink on this beige paper right now.
Well, that's our color.
Yeah, and you can't print on that.
Look like Herman Munster.
Okay. Costco opened, and we got a letter for membership, it's fifty-five dollars a year for the township, for member, membership. Me personally, I think that would be nice if we bought a lot of stuff in big bulk, and we had a pickup truck or a van or something to pick it up with, period, I mean, you know, I picked up food from the food pantry, and right now, and turkeys, I had, go out of town to countryside, which is, um, get my son's expedition, to carry, I mean, you know...
Do we have a membership at Sam's?
No.
We do now?
We used to, but we got rid of it, because of, one, their billing, they wouldn't change their billing date, their correspondence with us.
I'm, I'm not...
And Costco won't either.
I'm, I'm not adverse to, to getting a, a membership there, but I understand that Costco is, is a higher end store, more so than Sam's, so they're more expensive, but I've never been in a Costco.
Do I hear a motion to accept or deny, to accept Costco membership?
I'm excited, no, I mean, do we buy that much in bulk that we need it?
No.
I have a personal membership there, that if we needed to buy in bulk, we could use that.
Yeah, Marge has got one too.
All right, that would cover it.
It's a quality store, and I make a motion that the Riverside Township, uh, take a membership.
Do I hear a second? No second? Yeah. False, for no second.
Why don't we kind of keep track on how much we, you know, we think we might use it if we had it, and then if it seems worth while, we can get it?
I agree with you.
Because we can get it, I mean, we can get a membership any time.
Any time, yeah.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, but if it's, if we're not buying anything in bulk right now...
And what we do buy is in small bulk, but it's the little...
If you have a membership or something, maybe the people that have a membership, they just go over there and check out, possibly, go, you should go with maybe, to see what we would need and if it's worth it.
Office supplies.
You know?
They've got tons of it.
Oh, yeah, they have, they have a lot of stuff.
You bet.
They're just, and, and generally, it's good, things, I just don't know how much we would use it.
And maybe we should...
Boy, I'm sorry, I'm not hearing five boxes of, of computer paper, talking my teeth were going, it ruined my suspension.
Well, you got a passenger seat.
Pardon me?
Passenger seat.
Rip the leather, yeah, no thanks.
It's just like picking food out of the, the food pantry basket.
Buy a, buy a...
Why not send Andy over and get it?
Pardon me?
I'm not the guy that doesn't drive his bike.
Yeah, he does.
He's spring and summer, he always rides his bike.
He doesn't drive?
Yeah, he drives, but a small car.
Well, maybe, maybe the township should buy him a basket for his bike to put the suspension on.
Okay.
I mean, I have an SUV, so, you know...
I think it should be looked into, to see if it's worthwhile, I think, I think you're right.
Yeah, I think we should, like, kind of make a note, see how much we can get, um, to go over there, and as I said, we can always get it any time. So can you have a membership?
I'm going to get one.
Okay. Um, I got a note from Steve, do, uh, for, um, emergency, um, preparedness, from TAC, they'd like to hold, um, a committee meeting here at the end, he wants order lunch, like pizzas and non-alcoholic beverages, or the dinner meeting, actually, and he's expecting it to be less than a hundred dollars, do I hear approval of that?
I make a motion, we approve his request.
Second the motion.
Will, will Steve be on any, that commissioner on that?
He's going to be at the meeting.
He's, he's on initially, but...
I can't hear you, Anne.
He's on initially, he's, he's organizing this initial meeting with a person from Cook County, Homeland Security, and the township officials from, I know a couple of them are from Barrington, and I don't know where the others are from, and he has that information if you want to know all that.
No, I was going to, you know, because he, he's going to be out of office January first. I mean, you know, and, you know, should somebody else also be there? That would, and you've taken the classes. Would you like to go to this thing, too, or...
Well, it was something that the trustees division for TAC started organizing. So I, at this point, I haven't been involved. I, I mean...
Well, you've gone to all these...
Oh, yeah, no, no, I've taken a lot of FEMA classes and IEMA classes and so on. But the, what's happening at the Cook County level now is, it's just a new, a new process that the president of the division has kind of started. So I may be involved eventually, but at this point, I'm not involved. So we'll just have to see how it proceeds.
Okay. Roll call.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Approval community band holiday party, and, uh... And I don't know, about $100 for Bob Novo, which, because he put a lot of money in. And we hate to lose him. Because that means we'll probably lose most of the band that...
So are you suggesting that the honorarium does not come out of their budget? Or it would come out of their budget?
It could come out of their budget.
I don't have a problem with that. Let's do it. I make a motion we approve the community band holiday party and Bob Nova...Novella?
Yeah. As long as it's on honorarium. But I mean, the board should know, what?
Novelle. Sorry, I kept pronouncing that wrong.
Oh, roll call.
I mean, obviously, it has to be within their budget. I mean, I...
Obviously.
It's still within their, in their budget.
They're not going to tab a party in, you know?
You're not like my kids, right?
You know?
Oh, I gotta check. I don't need money in that account.
Okay. Does somebody second the motion?
Nobody seconded, but was there some notation in our packet for that?
No.
No.
I don't have it.
It's just on the agenda.
Just want to make sure. Who's seconding this motion? Thank you.
Riverside Chamber of Commerce...
Wait, they didn't vote it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
This year, the chamber, instead of having putting up a Christmas tree, they're selling ornaments for one big tree. You know, we've always bought a tree and, um...
And decorated it.
You know, depending on how many ornaments you, you would like to do.
So what are they doing? Putting up one tree?
Two.
Yeah.
Well, this says two on here.
Well, they're putting up, but it's not the individual trees anymore.
No, no, no.
Right. I mean, that wasn't good for the green, right, Leanne? I mean, cutting down all those little trees, killing them out there.
Yes, and green.
So now we got one tree, okay.
And we buy an ornament or two.
How much are the ornaments?
$50 a piece.
They better be pretty big ornaments for $50.
Can I make a motion that we support the 2013 Village Christmas Tree trimming event with a donation of $50?
Second the motion.
Any questions, concerns? I have a question. Why don't we go 100 for, one for each tree? I know, it's just a suggestion.
Yeah. Why don't we?
Do you want to do your motion, Anne, or...
Does, is Riverside going to be, is the township going to be mentioned on the ornament?
Yes.
For $50, about it.
You're going to have an ornament.
And we'll have our name on it.
They will?
So would you amend your motion to 100?
And I believe at the last chamber meeting that I was at, there's going to be one tree out in front of the train station, in that little park triangle, and then one tree by the historical society.
Is it going to be a 100-foot tree, or are they going to, you know, like they have, so somebody is going to cut down it out on this front lawn?
Wherever you're concerned.
I'll do Chicago's 100-foot tree. I'll go along with it. As long as the ornament's not at the top, where you can't see it, but...
I can amend the motion?
All right. So the motion will be a donation of $100 for two ornaments.
Second the motion to 100.
Do I hear any questions or concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
There, uh, I think it's, would be under the grants, but chamber again, which we usually do, double check, um, for the walk. We usually have a magician.
Have we done that before?
Oh, yeah.
He's very good.
No, I make a motion that we grant Riverside Chamber of Commerce the $450 for Mr. Dick Spence, for Mr. D's magic.
I second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Just one second, I'm sorry. Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And a grant for Riverside Parks and Recreation Grant for, um... For safety issues for parks and playgrounds, defense, and memory of life, I guess.
See, I have some concerns with this, which is something in looking at Jerry Buttermore's request. We pretty much made an affirmative decision a while back that we were not the board to take responsibility for village, any village in our township parks. But that really was a village responsibility and not a township responsibility. There have been some times in the past when things have gotten, well, we've had some expensive issues come up, and it just can become a little overwhelming. And we decided, and I hope you all remember that...
I do.
That, you know, the parks are not our issue.
Right. Yeah. So it doesn't hurt to ask.
I mean, there might be some extraordinary situation where we would want to participate in some, some project, but as a general rule, no.
So, any other questions or concerns?
You described that very well.
Hearing none, roll call.
There was no motion there.
No motion? I'm sorry.
But the motion would be not to...
Table.
Table.
No, we just go on.
Denied. It's really denied. We're not tabling it. It's not going to be brought back.
Okay, Central PTO grant for $1,000. We've done this in the past.
I'm going to make a motion we grant the Central School PTO grant, uh, the amount of $1,000.
I'll second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
North Riverside Police Department, hopefully, police on our unit, since... Fully, to make the squads fully functional for safety.
I'd like to, I'd like to learn more details of what this up, like, upfitting is. I don't quite understand what the $5,000 is going, and I saw their detail, and I still don't.
Well, on here, it says, shop service technician to install a console computer mount and gun tube on cage. And remount rack, interceptor explorer, console with sliding armrest and mount base. These are the thing, a laptop swing arm, pro-guard recess panel.
What's the purchase of the computer in your car?
No, which is for the, the equipment to put their computer in.
This is the upfitting to put the computer in.
It's not a computer.
And that's for five squad cars?
And five squad cars, you're right.
I make a motion we grant the North Riverside Police Department $4,924.85 to upfit the five squad cars mentioned in their grant for their computers.
Or we'd be making the purchase to...
Making the purchase, I'm sorry. That's why we could, we cannot grant one government agency to another.
Do I hear a second? Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
No.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Junior Women's Charity Grant. Still improve the quality of life in Riverside community and surrounding area by identifying human needs of its residents. I can't make up now. P-A-N-C-T-I?
It's hard to read that.
Yeah.
Can't figure out what is it.
Yeah.
The human needs of its residents?
Right.
Noting these needs and encouraging charitable support within the community to meet these needs.
It doesn't exactly say what they...
It doesn't.
Well, their next event is the trivia night.
So they're asking us for $1,500 for it to, for their trivia night?
That's what it looks like to me.
Yeah.
And then they help, um, you know, I know they're big on the 3rd of July. So they want $1,500 for their next, to put on their next fundraising event.
They do a lot to support the community, and if you look through this list, a lot of the individuals and organizations that they grant to are in the grants that we make, you know, organizations that we grant to as well. People Cares, the Arts Center, um, through the mental health pillars and Helping Hand and SegWing.
So we'd be crossing over?
Well, not completely, because they do additional to what we do or what we do through the mental health, or just different things. They're very active in the community, I know them.
But they want $1,500 to put on a fundraiser, to raise funds, and I don't know if we should be supporting a fundraiser.
Any other questions, concerns?
They have listed in here individuals and individual families that they have given to within the township. Um, maybe you could specify that it goes, of course, to individuals.
They have a list of them here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, Mary Robb, because they're, they want the money to raise money.
Right, yeah.
Instead of use it for one of these organizations, which they will, but we don't know which one.
Right. And we don't know how much they intend to raise at their fundraiser.
Right.
Well, then they should give us that information, and we can make a decision based on what they come back with, right? Do we know where this money is going, to which one of these? You're saying that's what we need to know? All right. Then we'll, then we'll need to know that from them, and then how much they're, they're raising, before we do anything.
That would be helpful.
Okay? Simple as that. Let's ask them for that information.
What do you want, Jen?
I guess the point was to find out which one of these organizations that money would be going to, because this money, they want a grant from us for fundraising. So we wanted to know where that money is going, to which of these organizations that they have listed in here. And, and how much do they plan on raising?
Well, if they're going to ra, if they're going to use it for fundraising, they're not going to, to, uh, give it to any of these organizations.
I thought that's what you said, Anne. You want to know which one of those organizations that money was going to.
Right. If that can be determined, I mean, it might just go into a big pool.
Well, that's what you said. Find out where the money's going, which one it was going to. I took that off of what Anne said.
Okay, um...
And I need how much they expect to raise at their fundraiser? If, maybe we could see a budget for the fundraiser?
Pardon me?
A budget for the fundraiser, how much they plan to spend on different items?
That's a good idea.
That would be helpful.
Yes.
That's what...
Okay. Girl Scout troop?
Okay. Girl Scout 657. Looking for $300 grant request for Silver's Award Project. Maintain level of reading librarian under privileged schools, folks needing transportation. Do I hear a motion to accept?
I make a motion that we grant the Girl Scout troop, 657 to $300, for their Silver, uh, Silver Award Project.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
North Riverside Public Library grant. The 35285 is for the senior drop-in program.
We do this every year, don't we?
Every year, yeah. Yeah, they have a little one, you know, senior drop-in. It is different than, like, North Riverside seniors or Riverside Township seniors. These are drop-in, Riverside used to have drop-ins, but nobody dropped in. Anymore. What can I say? The easiest way of putting it.
So we have to, we have to purchase the, the food, right? I mean, we can't, can't grant, I'll make a motion that we purchase the food for $382, $352, excuse me, 85 cents for the North Riverside Library to sponsor their annual holiday lunch.
Second.
For participants in the senior drop-in program.
Any other questions, concerns?
We got to hold on.
Hearing none, roll call. Roll call.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'm sure... I'll let everybody know, but I'm sure, you know, they'd like to see everybody there. I mean, you guys have been there in the past and...
It's nice.
Yeah.
It's a nice lunch and you get to meet some of the residents.
Right.
Yeah. You can make it.
Aging Care is looking for a $7,500 grant and I believe it's their annual grant. But it looks like it's gone up 50 percent. And they didn't explain... Their annual grant was $5,000 at 2012. We bought an ad for $250 in their ad book in August.
Well, it's 50 percent higher than it was last year.
They had all this material in the pamphlet they gave us. The one sentence that rang with me was in the letter where Deborah Rochelle said that last year, our incurred cost for serving older adults in Riverside Township was close to $150,000.
So do I hear a motion to grant Aging Care $7,500?
I'll make the motion. Let's see what happens.
Do I hear a second? No second. Going on. Riverside Cable Commission?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we grant them $6,000. So bring it up 1,000 instead of to 7,500.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none. Roll call.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
At 6,000, right, Ann?
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We gave them a grant already in 213.
Right. And this agreement that we have with the village is in effect only until December 31 of this year.
Right. No. So what... Do I hear a motion? No motion. Do I hear any questions or concerns?
Well, they ought to describe if this is the fee for next year.
Right.
I believe it is, but we... If we were going to do it, we had an intergovernmental agreement with the village for the current year. That would mean in addition to just approving the additional cost, that we would need to somehow extend the agreement that we have to cover next year. Because right now, the agreement ends December 31st.
So what did you say? Didn't we go through or talk to Joe Ballerine about that? He was the one that started this whole thing.
Right.
So maybe we should get him involved in that to get another agreement. I mean, our agreement is only...
Well, yeah, you know, I'll go to the village and say, "Give us a new intergovernmental agreement."
I thought he was responsible for putting all this together.
Well, he made the recommendation that we taped the meetings and showed them on Channel 6 or whatever it is.
So what are we doing? We're not going to do anything until we have a new agreement?
Well, I don't really think that we can.
Right.
I mean, I think... I mean, we need... This is between us and the village.
Correct.
And this expires the end of this year.
Right.
And this request relates, the way I read it, to 2014.
Well, that's what I mean.
So if we want to pursue it and do it, then I think we need to either get some little agreement extending this or...
We need an agreement with the village before we do this.
Right.
Are you going to contact the village on that, Rich?
Yes, I can.
And on the assumption that everybody here is in favor of continuing...
Sure.
If it's for the good of the taxpayers.
It's just the paperwork that is holding it up right now.
Well...
The government agreement.
Okay.
Okay. We classify codes on financial statements under FYI and lettering counter about tax objections. And I'd like to go adjourn now to a closed session.
Wait, can we... Before we do that, can we find out what the visitors want and then...
Yeah.
You know, so then they don't have to wait while we go into closed session. Did you...
No, they're just observing. They come all the time. They come all the time.
Anybody else have any questions?
I was just here for the aging care connection. So I appreciate this award. But just to get away, one minute to two minutes. I just want to let you know where your money went. We serve the $5,000 over 500 older adults in families in the light of 1300 hours. And those hours mostly went to 500 meals. We have a special diet meals program for older adults who are diabetic, renal failure, some of those other conditions. The other was chore housekeeping, or provide food assistance, preparing meals, laundry for seniors who can't do that on their own as well. That was over 100 hours alone.
And it's all within the township?
All within the township. And then the other reason was for... The increase will be effective July 1st. The Illinois Department of Human Services merged their Abuse Investigation Unit, which serves 18 to 59 with a disability, with the Illinois Department of Aging Abuse Investigation Unit that serves those that are 60 years of age or older. So now, by default, Aging Care Connection serves those that are 18 and older, and especially 18 to 59 with a disability. So we're working with Helping Hand, we're working with Segway Services, human support services, because this is new territory for us. We've already served 13 individuals since July 1st.
Is this why the grant request went up to 7,500?
That's part of it, yeah.
And what is his name?
I'm sorry, I can't. I'm the director of...
Okay. And what would be helpful is if you tell us that you're coming and that information would be very helpful before we vote. And I think maybe that might have affected what you did because that's excellent information. So if you could give, you know, tell us that first.
Sure. Definitely. We'll be better about putting that information.
Please.
That is where, in general, the money went to the $5,000 and anticipate that going on. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
And...
Make a motion we go into closed session?
Yes. At what is it? 8?
When we got it?
The purpose?
8? We have to second and vote on it, right?
We need to... The purpose that we're going into closed session in the motion?
Employment. Employees.
Employees concerning health insurance increase.
Okay, second.
Questions, concerns? Hearing none. We'll take a five-minute break while he gets his stuff.
Roll call vote.
Roll call. Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.